Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum if there's anybody here wishing to address the council. Now's the time. Seeing no movement from the gallery, I'm gonna close the public forum and go on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
We do have an agenda change.
Oh, well, that's part of this process, but go ahead with your agenda change.
On the, under new business, just need to add item number five, which is a letter of support for a health ministries grant application from the mayor.
Yeah, a little familiar with that one. Any questions with that change, council? Well, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted, I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We'll move on to unfinished business, and the first item is distressed property at 217 Main. Ethan will bring us up to date on that one.
Yeah, I will turn this over to Brad as he's been working with the property owner, but I believe contract's been presented. We're a little slow in this process as we don't have an electronic or fax means for this property owner. I do believe Brad was looking at scheduling a meeting.
Yep, this week. I'm just gonna make the trip to Abilene just for informational purposes. There's a copy of what the contract looks like.
And your trip to Abilene is gonna be to close on that quick claim deed, or how are we doing that?
No, it's to get the signed contract. We'd still do the closing here.
Okay, gotcha.
We were originally hoping to be, we'd be wrapped up and have a signed contract and be reporting a closing date, but hopefully we will be able to present you all a closing date by the next meeting.
Yeah, presuming that there aren't any other hiccups to it, I should be back with that, take it over to security first, and they've already done the preliminary owners' encumbrances policy, so there really isn't a great deal more for them to do on this one, and I've prepared the deed, et cetera, so that's ready to go. I would think within a few weeks. We've got the holiday in there in terms of Thanksgiving, but wouldn't be anything that I know of that precludes it from closing. I did set this thing way back when at the end of the year, just in case we had some huge issue, but there really isn't anything in terms of the title itself or any other encumbrances on it, so I don't anticipate a problem.
Right, the only thing I ask, I have a question, because I'm just curious, I don't understand. On the second one about the don't, buyer agrees to accept the donation of $10,000 with no funds changing hands?
Right.
What's the reason for actually stating that but not funds changing hands?
Just for his purposes, you know, it's not, we don't endorse it. I just asked him what value do you want to put on it for purposes of your understanding as to what you're giving. It also is helpful to us because I argue that that then is the value that we use for title insurance. If we put zero, they're not gonna give you title insurance of any kind or character because it's not, there's no value.
Okay.
So that's why.
All right, good, thank you.
Any other questions, council? So we just need a motion to continue this, or what?
Yeah, I think just a motion to continue to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have at least a closing date to report. Just do want to remind, and for the public, I mean, the land bank would be actually who's purchasing this, just as it's in distressed property. So it's not the city proper, it's the land bank. But that's already been approved by the land bank, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to move the acquisition of the distressed property at 217 Main until our next scheduled council meeting.
Well, we're just continuing the distressed property hearing, right?
Yes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing for 217 Main to the next regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now we'll move on to the distressed property at 308 Chestnut. I believe Ethan received an email that he sent us all. He might enlighten the council with where we're at there.
Yeah, Perazzi's email, they have closing set for the 30th, so day after tomorrow. Beyond Ozzy, he just noted, as I'm sure you've all seen, the repairs that are currently underway, that they've engaged in form of the roofs, they're working on the walkways, particularly on that south building. I did talk to Stacy, who represents the buyer of the property. She also confirmed that it was her understanding that 30th would be the closing date, so they're kind of at the mercy of that process, but hope that, again, the city would be willing to deal with this two-day delay and understood. I said I would probably imagine it's gonna get continued to November 11th to make sure the closing went through. They are continuing to work on the property as far as the building permits that were polled. No issues have been reported there as far as when Pat's gone over to look at things via the city's inspection. I do know they had a structural engineer come out to look at some of the repairs, like on the walkways, and I've asked for a copy of that report and the suggested repairs. I do not know what firm they used.
Yeah, that'd be good to know.
But Stacy said she'd get that information to me. So that's where, not ideal. We hoped it would be closed and change hands, and I think the Bison Foundation understands that the process itself does not necessarily close, just because they bought the property. But right now, it's still owned by Mr. Reckus.
Now, is the issue still property lines?
No, I think everything's been resolved. It was just their date was set for October 30th.
Okay, so what I, my, what I think I'd like to do, if they do not close by the 30th, I would like to have them cease and desist any work until they have that closed, because we gave them approval to commence work with the understanding that they were gonna get that property closed in a timely manner. We're beyond that at this point. And I think I would like to see them informed that if it doesn't close by the 30th, then they're, they have to vacate the property, no work to be done on it. Would I hear from somebody else?
Is that possible?
Not. What can we do?
Nothing. I mean, really, I mean, they've undertaken the repairs at this point. I don't think there's a court around that wouldn't grant them, overrule us and say that that's unreasonable on our part, because they've, they're near the completion and they've undertaken and they've expended a great deal, and then we have funds and everything else is in place.
Is there anything we can do to send a message?
Yeah, that, just what you're saying, that, you know, hey, the quickest opportunity we have would be causing some kind of change to occur here. We're gonna proceed forward with the, you know, the stressed property proceeding. But again, what you're gonna be doing if you do that is saying, okay, we tear it down. You're gonna be in court overnight.
Right, I understand that. I mean, they've got money invested there.
Yeah, I do. I think the use of taxpayer dollars is better spent elsewhere than that. I'll be candid with you.
I get it, yeah, I get it.
That's what we want.
Yeah.
You know, Bison, I don't know that much about them, but I think they're being straightforward with us, and they're doing what they're said they were going to do. It just takes longer than they had anticipated, well, we had definitely anticipated. So as long as they're working on it, I'm happy.
My point of view has never been about them.
No, I understand that, yeah.
I think that.
So I hate to slap them on the hands.
Well, then what, I mean, what options do we have? Because a couple of weeks ago, you know, like, we talked about everything, dates getting bumped back and for unforeseen this and unforeseen that. I mean, what legal options do people, I mean, I guess, because if we can't ask them to, I don't know, if you can't ask them to do what George said, then what can you ask that's within reasonable request to say, this has been drawn out? I mean, we're months along the line of, of, well, it's a property line this, or it's a whatever that, and now it's a whatever you just said with, the date was originally always set to this or something, but what's it gonna be next, I guess?
So hypothetically, Ozzy could do this, just keep doing this, I mean, and they could be moving along just as they are and never really have the property signed over to them. And they really, they could end up fixing this building up for Ozzy, and he says, why choose not to close now?
Yep.
Well, but the goal was to get the building fixed up.
Right.
Saying that would be mine of, even though the property has not switched hands, which I understand why that's a position all, everyone is very comfortable with, they are basically addressing the distressed things by doing the repairs on the property, and that actually is what got the city involved, not who owned the property. So, I mean, if they repair, in theory, if they drag out, and I don't know the, you know, financial of who's, who's paying or who's reimbursing who for repairs at this point, I mean, the permit fees, all that, we're with the current property owner. I mean, it is possible that they do enough work, it comes out of distressed property and it's fixed, and it just goes back to potentially being a vacant property, which is illegal.
At this point, we just continue it to the next meeting and hopefully it closes on the 30th like it's supposed to. That's where I'm at with it.
Well, if there's not, like, why do we keep talking about it?
How do we determine when it's no longer distressed property?
Like, if they have the engineer report and complete that, that list of repairs that you guys all had, and it passes city inspection.
When it has occupant, occupancy, certificate of occupancy, then that's no longer distressed property.
No, it can come out of distressed property before it has a occupancy certificate. That's a whole different ballgame to get that occupancy permit.
Like, addressing the hole in the roof was a major step. Once the walkways are stabilized, that would be, I mean, that's your getting structural, and then some of the other things that were on the report, I mean, that were noticed, you could make the argument that those are aesthetic things, which.
Sure.
Let me do a little more. First of all, and I know that's a big deal, and I completely understand why, but a distressed property proceeding doesn't give a damn about who the owner is. It's, is the property compliant or isn't it? Are remedial measures at a reasonable pace currently for ongoing? Yeah, I think they are, enough that a court would not allow us to go forward. That's, you can do the cease and desist, so the answer to the question is, can you do what George asked? Yeah, I can do it. I just think that I would be overturned almost immediately, overnight on a very quick turnaround. Example, another city, they fought with an owner on a stone and brick structure for years. The night that they voted to, well, they had voted to go ahead and have it be a distressed property and proceed on it, but he kept making repairs. The night that they were, received the report to the court, because they tried to do exactly the same thing, do a cease and desist, kick them off and say, we're gonna take it down. They received the report from the, at that point, it was the Court of Appeals, because it had gone that far. You can't, you gotta let him, he's making reasonable efforts, and so it's gonna go on. The irony was that it was also that same evening during the course of that meeting that they heard the rumble and the building fell down on itself. It was that bad. But the court's still, it's a taking. When we take the property and we tear it down, we have irrevocably changed and altered it. And so constitutionally, property rights are protected as an interest, and the courts take it pretty seriously. If the owner is making reasonable efforts, whoever that owner is, we're stuck. I mean, it just isn't something that we get to go beyond a certain point on. And the part that we're dwelling on a bit now is, okay, still in his hands, and I understand why, because you can't trust that, and you're right, you're absolutely right. If he goes backwards with them and they have to sue him over specific performance, that's completely outside the realm of what we do. We can't compel that transfer. All we can do is compel the repairs of the building.
As you've been speaking on this, I'm thinking, this is another learning experience. If we have to go through this with Ozzy again, we don't go this route again. We make sure the property has changed hands completely.
Yeah.
Before we give him access.
Or, I mean, or he will also learn that, okay, I better do what is minimally required to get that thing up to standard, so I get you off my back. Because, again, it's not our ability to make him turn it over to someone else. This has just served as a tool to do that.
Well, it's hard to say, but this has been, definitely been a learning experience for all of us. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue this distressed property hearing at 308 Chestnut till next scheduled council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing for 308 Chestnut to the next regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, now we can move on to new business. Get into something fun here. Halloween Howl, special event and street closure application. Nobody's here to represent Halloween Howl, so I guess you're gonna have to represent them, Ethan.
Yeah. This is just the normal closure for Halloween Howl. It's kind of a unique one, because it's, as you guys know, has the Halloween parade, so the closure kind of moves and then basically ends up being the part of the 200 and the 300 block for, for a couple hours. Usually, I think everything's cleared out by eight o'clock. Weather obviously plays a role in that as well, so we, as far as from a staff perspective, they went and got 51% of the Main Street signatures they needed. It doesn't interfere because of how later in the evening it is with the majority of business operations in the blocks that will be physically closed. Support asked from the city in terms of fire EMS, helping with closure streets, public works is the same as always, so we see no reason to not approve their request for closure.
I'm a little concerned it's three days before the event, whereas it could have been last council meeting, but tradition is tradition, and so, yeah.
Well, traditionally, I think they always wait until three days before they.
Tradition is the Halloween Howl. That's kind of important to a lot of people. I remember my kids going to Halloween Howl, they're over 40, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-15, a resolution authorizing a temporary closure of Main Street for Halloween Howl.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2024-15 for Halloween Howl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes. Next item is a natural gas prepay project with KMGA. Ethan will bring us up to speed on that one.
Thank you. KMGA is looking at another prepay project. Hopefully you all have a chance to review the slides in there. Again, it's called prepay, it's kind of a misnomer, it's not actually buying gas, you know, prepaying for gas, so to speak, it's getting a dedicated discount. There's some funding mechanisms, and with the way natural gas supply that opens up this opportunity for bonds to be issued to secure gas supply at a, at a discount, or we would still be paying KMGA directly. They have not set, as far as KMGA, the group, of what they're looking at.
And these discounts only apply to the normal nominations. It's, once we've used the normal nominations and we're subject to the daily market, that still exists, right?
Yeah, we would, we have a blend, most of it's first a month or, or monthly or end-of-month pricing, and then we do have a little bit in the daily market. So whatever our nominations are, we would probably recommend no more than 50%, because you don't want to overobligate. And then, yeah, you just get the discount per MMBTU, the market conditions for the past one, the KMEA side had participated in, saw over 50 cents per MMBTU. So when gas is around $4, you know, that's, it's a pretty nice discount, but you can hopefully see from the spreadsheet there, too, this is, you know, overall, it's not shifting things, it would probably be most meaningful to our large-scale, you know, Ergon, Martin, Leg Company, some of our bigger gas users than on the residential side. The, the big thing, and I know when it was first presented in 2019, the governing body at that time really wanted to look at it, and then the conditions never materialized, we had actually approved participation and all that, and then I think last year when we brought it up, there was some hesitancy, because it is potentially a 30-year commitment. There are basically five-year window chunks, and that has to do with when the bonds can be refinanced. But essentially, how it would work is if KMGA as a group said, we want a 40-cent discount, if they can't at least get that 40-cent discount, then the deal doesn't go forward, or KMGA would have the option to, to walk away. And then at five years, if they can't honor, continue to honor that, that supposedly is always, you know, an off-ramp for the city. There's also caveats in there, let's say we lost load, sold our gas system, whatever the case may be, something that's, you know, force majeure in nature, the city would have off-ramp. I didn't want to put the draft documents from the last one, because they always change with whoever the, the parties are, but Brad can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, those are generally some of the provisions. It is just potentially, you know, a, a long-term commitment, assuming the discount could already be.
I remember the last time this come up, and they were looking for that 30-year commitment, and I said, no way would I commit to anything for that long a time period. But five-year, if we can get out in five years.
We're only obligated to stay as long as they can meet whatever that discount threshold is. So, according to the contracts that.
And you're, you're not looking for approval on this tonight, you're just bringing it to our attention, so.
Yeah, this would be something of, they're trying to get, obviously, loads. Halsted actually does have a pretty significant load for a city our size. You know, last time when it was, hey, we're not participating, it's easy to just tell them, hey, don't factor in Halsted's gas usage at all. This case, if we still want to, I just tell them, yeah, you can still put, we'll start trying to figure out what we would want to nominate, but you all still would have to approve those final contracts, the agreement with KMGA, and so you'd have a chance to review all that. So it doesn't obligate us by saying, yeah, we're still interested, it's just for my sake, not wanting to waste my time or Pat's time trying to do the math on what, what we might want to take in terms of.
Well, does your gut tell you this is gonna be advantageous for Halsted to join this?
It's, I, if you do the math on like the, the 33-cent savings, you know, I mean, it's $33,000 over the course of a year per meter, I mean, you're talking $5 a year, I mean, again, if it was, if we were more residential, I'd say it's hard to kind of justify maybe the, the long-term commitment. I do think, though, it does present savings opportunities. Natural gas is higher now, it's probably not gonna get much cheaper. So this does, at least, is a way for the city to try and save money in terms of what we pay for natural gas, which is directly passed on then to our end users, be they commercial or residential. So there's savings there, it's just, because it's not a direct on the entire supply, it's, it's not as much, and again, it's $33,000, our gas budget overall, you know, is $2 million in a year, so, I mean.
Well, $33,000, that's money we can spend somewhere else.
Well, I, I got the sense also, reading through that, that many things had to work out just right for it to be beneficial to us.
Yeah.
And not just a, yeah, let's sign here and it, let's go, but all, several stars and planets had to be lined up for this thing to work well in our, in our favor.
Yeah, and like 2019, they had, I think, 33 cities of KMGA were on board, we'd all passed everything, thought it was gonna go through, and then, I forget, what exactly happened, the market switched, there was no arbitrage, if you will, for the marketers to make, make their, what they like to make on these prepay, and it never went through. And so when the la, next one came up, we felt we couldn't in good conscience honor it, because the governing body had shifted, you know, so.
Yeah, this is, this is a totally different realm than buying futures.
Yeah.
Totally different realm, you know, and those common people recognize what futures are all about and how you can get slaughtered in futures. This is not that much difference.
No.
You have to be careful with your amount of nominations, because if we get a warm, warm winter, we got gas out there we paid for, we're not using, that's always the caveat to figuring this out.
That's true.
So.
And I don't put a lot of credence into farmers on the lack.
I can tell you, I, thanks to Winter Storm Yuri, I know way more about buying natural gas than I ever thought I would know. But I would say, put the paperwork together, have Brad look at it, and let's take another, another look at this to see if we think we can benefit. With that low percentage in savings, $33,000 is a significant amount of money to any individual, but for the city's overall budget and to tie us up for a long-term contract, it just may not be in the best interest, and we'll just have to sit down and figure that out.
And that's a maybe 33.
Yeah.
Right, I'd also be interested if there was other communities similar to us that have taken advantage of that, or how that worked out possibly.
We'd not know who's in it.
Yep.
Is that information, can you, can you gain that information by now?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we were, in the last go-around, I mean, we were one of the cities that flipped from a yes to a no, and there's, I mean, there's been larger takers or people that have consistent load, and that's one of our advantages, is Ergon gives us a consistent load year-round, so we're not super heavy in the winter and, and, you know, we, we don't fall off. We're actually, I think, out of KMGA cities is the third highest in terms of how much gas our city uses, thanks to, thanks to our industry, so only Winfield, Heston, and some of the power plants are bigger than us.
All right, so you have what you need on that one?
I, we just, consensus is to at least continue to explore.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Good plan. Next item under new business is industrial park lot split application. This is, this is our city manager's doing, so he can explain that.
Yeah, so this is the 535 Industrial, which is where the cell phone tower splits, that's about a one and a half acre lot. The cell phone tower sits in that far southeast corner of that lot. You can see there, this would divide that lot into two parcels, one that basically encompasses the land with some additional frontage around that cell tower, which keeps that owned, but then would open up about one, 1.1, 1.2 acres for the city to market for other industrial use. Right now, with the way the cell tower lease is, even though it's on a very small portion of it, we can't sell that lot without getting the cell tower's permission first, we can't lease it to another person for use on the rest of the land. So this just opens up our ability to utilize that property a little more. Talking with Brad, it's not, we're keeping in the terms of it because we're keeping the land the tower sits on as its own, own separate, but before I put a lot split application before our planning commission, and since you all own it as the, the governing body, I want your permission to seek that formal lot split.
So, right now, on the lease where the cell tower is, is that lease just on the footprint of the cell tower, or is it on that whole lot?
It's technically.
Footprint.
Yeah, the, the footprint of it.
Okay, so they really don't have a say in us doing this lot split?
Arguably, because it's all one lot that the footprint sits in, it creates an issue, and so splitting it goes ahead and gives us the ability to say, you don't have that opportunity anymore.
I'm just thinking out loud here, do you think it's something that they're gonna fight us on, or?
I doubt it, because I don't think we're gonna do anything that would particularly impair what their business function is.
And will limit their access?
No, I mean, it, it, it ties it out, it keeps enough of a buffer, too, I mean, beyond the fence of 25 feet, it, actually, that parcel still is compliant with like zoning regs in terms of the size of industrial lot.
Is that part that's surveyed out there, is that part of it, or is that future plans?
As far as?
Well, I noticed they surveyed, I walk by there all the time, so.
Yeah, no, that was what Garber did, basically, to say where the lines are.
That's right.
So.
There's a lot of room out there, actually.
Yep.
I'm good with it.
All it takes is a motion and a second, a vote to do it.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the city manager to pursue lot split for the city property located at 535 Industrial Road.
Second. Have a motion and a second to let Ethan proceed with the lot split on 535 Industrial Road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes. Next item on the agenda is the request for proposal for the powers lots 1 through 4 for the sale and development of those. Let Ethan bring us up to par on that.
Thank you. You have a draft RFP, definitely want feedback, and that's for powers lots 1 through 4, just kind of from discussion in the work session. Establishes essentially the parameters for anyone who would be interested to provide the information as requested in that RFP, in terms of kind of background, who's, who's doing what, understanding that there's floodplain concerns on some of the lots, and then is essentially a sealed bid. Staff would open them for preliminary evaluation and then present them to you all at the council meeting, which if you approved it tonight, we set that for our second meeting in November. Just to not belabor, this is kind of a unique RFP, we've never issued one quite like this as far as. Just to not belabor, this is a kind of a unique R F P. We've never issued one, um, quite like this as far as buying lots directly from the city for development. Did note, talking with Brad, I mean, we, we will just have to have subsequent agreements to somebody being approved to purchase in terms of like development or, I mean, I know some of the contractors are making sure whoever buys it actually develops the lots. Um, it's, it's hard to get that worked into the R F P. Um, because if you don't have a contract to buy the land, that's where that would naturally come in. So, uh, we do have, everyone has to basically submit a statement that they understand they're going to be asked probably for additional agreements with the city to, to facilitate the purchase. So, um, but it's your guys' R F P and, and your process. So if you want longer, other things you want to ask potential respondents for, by all means, we can get that changed and.
I thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on there that jumped out at me. Well, if nobody's any more questions or discussion on it, I'm going to make a motion, uh, to approve the issuance of the R F P for the sale of development of powers lots one through four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to issue the R F P for the powers lots one through four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. In that case. Next item under new business that we added to the agenda is that letter of support. Ethan can tell you what that's all about.
Yeah, um, Health Ministries is applying for a grant. Um, and we have provided support to them, um, in years past for that application as they have their location here. Um, this, they asked for it to come from the mayor. So since that he's speaking on behalf of the city in terms of support, uh, just bells and suspenders to have you all approve the city taking that official position of support on their application. And I will s- Don't have the name of what the grant is, but I know we've done this in the best.
There's no discussion or questions. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve a letter of support, uh, for Health Ministries, uh, drafted by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, provide a letter of support, uh, for Health Ministries grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That passes, but Julie's going to draft it and then I'll check it out. Ethan's got it drafted.
And Ethan's going to pass it to Brad. Brad's going to pass it to somebody else.
You guys have red letters of support. It's, it's pretty non-binding.
All right, we've got a, a couple of executive sessions this evening. And I would, uh, entertain the motion for the first one of those now.
How long do you want?
Is this for?
Two days.
Give, give, give us thirty minutes with, and with, with, without our city manager for the first ten.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that, uh, Halsted City Council resists your executive session to discuss review of the city manager. Personnel matters of non-elected personnel exemption K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to include the city attorney, the city manager, and to re-adjourn at eight oh five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We'll go to the backroom council.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve a 5% increase to the salary of Administrator Reimer and make it retroactive to his hire date.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to give a 5% merit raise to our city manager making it retroactive to his anniversary date. All in favor say aye. All say nay. Motion carries. We do have another executive session planned for this evening and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss pending contract negotiations, consulting with the city attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 75-4319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney, and the reals. Convene at 8:15.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye. All say nay. We'll move back to the back room, council. Well, let's be safe out there on this Halloween and come down and join us for the Halloween Howl downtown.
Charlie.
Vote. Vote. And if all else fails, let my conscience be your guide.
There you go.
Yeah.
I think Sean already covered what I was gonna say, and ditto on that.
Ditto. Yeah, I would, I would echo Charlie's comments that voting is a very important thing. I myself, the first time I ran for the seat of mayor, I think I lost that election by 19 votes. And then I won one here a couple of years ago by 15. So it does matter, especially in these smaller elections, but the larger ones as well. I don't have anything else to add. I'll try to show up at Halloween Howl. I'm not sure what the wife has on my schedule, but that sounds funner probably than what she wants to do anyway. So I'll move on to the city manager and his report.
The planning commission has continued their work sessions and regular meetings regarding potential regulations related to the battery-energy storage system. They have invited and heard from both Holstead Fire EMS and Groundwater Management District Number Two on their thoughts or suggestions regarding regulations. They do hope to be done with their draft regulations before the end of the year, which will then come before you all for consideration as to whether their suggested changes should be incorporated into our local zoning regulations. I'm also trying to set up a tour of the best that is in Minneapolis, Kansas on a Friday, so I'll be reaching out to you all to see if November 8th or 15th would work, for those of you who wanted to go look at that best facility, as Friday was the best day that worked for the people who were interested from the planning commission going, just to minimize. So, and if, if we need to, we can definitely probably schedule multiple visits. So, the new wayfinding signs have been finished, being installed through Miracle Signs. The response has been overwhelmingly positive from the community, and I really just want to recognize and thank Pat and Public Works for their efforts in putting in the footings for the signs. Miracle said they were some of the best footings they've had done. They get a little, they get a little concerned when groups take on their own work, but he said that their concern was completely unfounded, that they did a great job. They were straight, flat, set up exactly right. And Public Works doing that did save us about 20% on the estimated project cost. So that basically just made those grant dollars go further, lowered what would have been our local match. So, thanks again to Pat and Public Works, because I know they work that into their already very busy schedules. Monthly reporting for the SEED 2.0 grant has been completed, and quarterly reporting for the city's BASE 2.0 grant has also been completed. City staff also successfully renewed the city SAM registration to keep us eligible for federal grant opportunities. We had our final meeting with Blue Cross Blue Shield regarding our insurance renewal. Health insurance costs will increase just over 2%. Our dental insurance costs were closer to 15%. And there's no anticipated increase in costs for vision, our employee assistance program, life insurance, or short-term disability. So even though dental was a little higher than anticipated, overall, it's a fraction of those, you know, combined healthcare costs that the city pays. And the city continues to see the benefit of our participation in the association health plan through CAMIT, as the last two years, we've basically held flat on our health insurance costs, while not having to change plans. I attended the KMEA/KMGA conference in Wichita this past Wednesday and Thursday, was nominated to serve as the vice president of the KMGA Executive Committee, which is a year-long position. Sessions during the conference include an outlook on the overall energy markets, as KMEA is more on the electric side, and then KMGA is the gas side, and then as well as specifically natural gas, and some of the challenges or opportunities that are going to come up in the natural gas markets, they think. Garber Surveying completed their projects for the city, which included evaluating and preparing descriptions for the industrial park lot split, and then marking the north boundaries of Riverside Park and future Lehman Park. And after further review of the recreational trails grant, we are holding off on an application for that, as the award amounts well below what would be needed for a meaningful first phase to get Lehman Park started. We are exploring a spring opportunity that has a better funding, more funding available for the Lehman Park project, and we're working with a consultant on a funding strategy for those park improvements, including applying for that spring opportunity when it's announced. And the initial report has been submitted to KDHE on our lead service line inventory. So again, thanks to Pat for compiling and putting that together. Residents can still fill out the survey and turn that into the city if they have not done so, as we are being asked by KDHE to continually update that and make it a living document. Also, for residents who received their temporary construction easement documents related to the Safe Houses and Schools project, please just consider getting those filled out, or contact us here at City Hall. Let us know what questions you have, so we can continue moving forward with that project. We will probably start doing individualized contact the following week to continue getting that moved forward. Reminder that city offices will be closed to the public on November 11th. This is an in-service day for all our employees, where we cover our annual required trainings, go over insurance changes and other pertinent information for staff. Reminder that Halloween Howl is this Thursday evening. City staff and the Lions Club will be set up here in front of City Hall, where we pass out candy, the glow necklaces, and the Lions Club does hot chocolate. Governing body members are more than welcome to come and participate. And then the only other thing I would also call out is, you will see probably via Facebook and some more announcements from Holstead Fire EMS, they're doing flapjacks at the firehouse on November 9th. It's kind of tended to be a fundraising and recognition event for our fire department and the volunteers and people who help make that department what it is. So, I hope everyone has time on Saturday morning, November 9th, to get that on their schedule. And that is all I have this evening, unless there are any specific questions.
Ethan, is there, is there any desire by the employees, by the staff, for hearing insurance?
I don't know. We could ask. I mean, other than what's historically been...
I mean, it's part of some Medicaid or Medicare packages. I'm just curious. And having hearing aids myself, I realize.
See, it's never been a specific request, but yeah, no, it's something we can definitely bring up, because we typically talk.
I mean, I know you've got a, a meeting coming up, so.
Yeah.
You know, if there is, there isn't. If there's not, okay.
Nope. It's a good suggestion.
Council, any other questions for Ethan this evening? If not, that concludes our agenda, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.
Thank you.